And so I'll go ahead and call this meeting to order. And we'll go to our city clerk Wendy Wood for the roll call.
Councilmember Fan. Councilmember Dominguez.
Present.
Councilmember Tua.
Here.
Vice Mayor Montana.
Here.
Mayor Tran.
Present. Thank you very much, Wendy. Next up here is the Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand as you may.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic on which it stands, one nation, undivided, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Second, my agenda just kind of disappeared on me. Click here. Okay, I had to reopen my agenda. Okay, great. Thank you for your patience. Next up here, we are going to do the public forum. And so let's go ahead and take a look at our attendees. Thank you, everybody, for joining us this evening. And I'll look for any public comment here under the public forum. And we'll do one minute tonight. Okay, I don't see any virtual raised hands. Okay, that's a very short agenda. Plenty of opportunities for comment. Thank you, folks. Moving on here to announcements. Let's check in with our city manager, Stephen Harris.
Thank you, Mayor Tran. Members of council, I have no announcements for the special meeting. Thanks.
Thank you very much, Steve. It's like clockwork. As for me, I don't have any announcements either. It's kind of one item meeting tonight. I'm gonna stick to that. Look to my colleagues as a common courtesy. If there's any announcements, we got another meeting tomorrow night. Okay, great. Moving on here, we have our city attorney, team member, Martin Day, Los Angeles. I want to welcome Martin. Did I say it right? Martin or is it Martin?
Martin's fine, Mayor.
Okay, Martin, thank you for helping me. So we have Martin here in our city attorney's office. He'll be providing us service tonight. So happy to have you here. And if you can help us with announcement of conflict of interest and campaign contributions, Martin.
Thanks, Mayor. I'll just be asking one question because we don't have any contracts or development project applicants on the agenda tonight. So I will just ask the conflict question and not the campaign contribution question. So I will ask the mayor and each council member whether he or she has any financial or personal conflict of interest related to any of the items on tonight's agenda, with the one item being agenda item number one. I'll start with councilmember Dominguez.
None.
Councilmember Tua.
None.
I see a councilmember fan.
Present.
I'm sorry, I'm asking about the conflict of interest.
Oh, none.
None. Okay, thank you. Vice Mayor Montano.
None.
And Mayor Tran.
None for me, but I do want to state that I live within 1,000 feet of Main Street. And I'll be very mindful of decisions that may be directly to my residence. But other than that, no conflict of interest. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Let the record reflect none to that question with a notation by Mayor Tran. And I'd be happy also to read the code of conduct if you'd like, Mayor.
Please, please, would love for you to read it.
Okay, thank you. So Milpitas City Council Code of Conduct. Be respectful and courteous, words, tone, and body language, model civility, avoid surprises, praise publicly and criticize privately, focus on the issue, not the person, refrain from using electronic devices while on the council days, disclose conflicts of interest and affiliations related to agenda items, separate governing from campaigning. The council speaks with one voice after making policy on issues. Respect the line between policy and administration. And the council will hold one another accountable to complying with this code of conduct.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Martin. Sound work. I appreciate it. Moving on here to the approval of the agenda. We got one item tonight. Hearing no objections. I'll go ahead and just move to approve it myself. I hear no objection. Has been approved. Moving on to agenda item number one. Let's go ahead and jump into it. And we know we have our guests here that have been working on the Milpitas Metro. And so welcome to our guests. Let's go ahead. I'm so excited. Agenda item number one is conduct the sixth study. Has it been six times already? Well, let's conduct the sixth study session on the Milpitas Metro specific plan focusing on real estate economics and the reciprocal relationship between development and public infrastructure. That being said, going to now our director of planning, Ned Thomas.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. We're happy to be with you again tonight for the special study session. We've spent a couple of months since we last met with you to talk about things going on and planning activities going on down in the metro area. So tonight we have a very interesting presentation for you. It's a little, I'll forewarn you, it's a little bit long and a little bit complex, but Jane and Christine and Tafion are here. We've been, hopefully, we have organized the materials and information in a way that will make it somewhat entertaining. At our last meeting, we had a lot of questions about real estate development and how decisions are made. And we, of course, are all excited to see the planning that is being done for the city's Innovation District as well as other areas of the metro plan. So we'll touch a little bit upon each of these. And I don't know who's going to go first. Jane, are you doing some introductions? We have, of course, Jane Lynn from Urban Field Studio here tonight, as well as Christina Paul from Metropolitan Planning Group, also known as M Group. And also Tafion Rice Evans will be doing a bit of the, quite a bit of the presentation as it is his area of expertise on real estate economics. And I believe Alex Andrade will also chime in to talk about the Innovation District. So without further delay from me making introductions, I'll turn it over to Jane and then we can go from there. Thank you again for allowing us to be here tonight.
Great. Thank you, Ned, and thank you, councilmembers. It's great to see you this evening. I will start sharing my screen just momentarily. And here we go. All right, so here we are. It's the sixth session. This time we are really focusing on the economics of how this plan works. We will go through a real estate economics overview. We'll talk about some of the city's policy levers and tools for making Milpitas Metro into reality. We'll do a little focus on the Innovation District, its vision and how to make that real. And we'll look at the infrastructure financing that is a big part of the plan. And we'll do a little progress report on our drafting of the plan. So this is what's in store for the next little bit. This is from the city's website that shows all the current projects that are in the area. It's really great to see that the ones in blue are completed and occupied. There's quite a bit of this area that has been completed, as you know, roughly, as you look at this, about half of it. And then under construction is in red. And there is quite a bit left as well. So what we see here is that there has been significant change in the area and that we're anticipating some more even now that the BART station is open. This is just a quick summary of the opportunity sites. There are quite a few left. Of course, the biggest one of all is the Great Mall. And then there's a couple of concentrations of different parcels, both in the Terre Haute-Sango Court area, along Hurricourt, near the BART station as well. And there are two new areas. There's the Main Street extension of the TASP area and now into the Milpitas Metro Plan area. And also the Innovation District, which goes beyond the South Milpitas Boulevard and Berriessa Creek right there. So this will be something we'll focus on today with the Innovation District. We have been doing some land use planning. We've come to you before with the land use map. And so this is probably quite familiar to you, but just to point out that in this, there are many different types of land uses here tonight. We'll really focus on the commercial side, especially employment lands in the Innovation District. And those are all in those blues and blue greens. So keep your eye on those. And those stretch across to the Great Mall sub-district as well. So here we go. We're going to, I'm going to hand this over now to Tafion Rice Evans, who is with EPS, our economist.
Thank you, Jane. Good evening, Mayor and council members. Yes, as Jane noted, we thought, or perhaps Ned noted, we thought it might be helpful to start off this evening with a little bit of background on real estate economics and really a discussion of the ways in which cities and developers interact to kind of build the kinds of places that we're looking for. And I really want to focus a little bit on talking about how developers make decisions on whether to move forward with growth and also how the levers, some of the levers and tools cities have available to them in helping to kind of guide and encourage the kind of growth they want to see. So cities, of course, play a very significant role in helping to shape their own growth and evolution. They create divisions for the city as a whole, but for the, for sub-areas and places. You get to guide development through decisions around land use designations, you know, heights, densities, and parking requirements. You get to decide to protect certain areas for specific beneficial uses where you choose to. We get to set the fees so we can build the necessary facilities and infrastructure. And in some cases, we can require additional public benefits from our developers through things like affordable housing, ground floor retail, et cetera. We also support new development by pursuing and attracting a range of funding, regional, state, and federal for infrastructure. And we can also incentivize development where appropriate by being flexible and supportive and providing investments. We'll talk a little bit more about that later on. Next slide, please, Jane. Thank you. So developers also play an important role in building our cities. We really need our developers to build the buildings around us in cities. We do not have the expertise to do that. And developers bring with them experience. They construct high-quality buildings, or constructing high-quality buildings requires sophistication. It requires capital and commitment. It also provides the opportunity for value creation when developers build a variety of housing, workspaces, and other uses that we're able to form a complete neighborhood. And they also bring with them, or can bring with them, certain community benefits, as I mentioned before, investments in infrastructure, fees, and other community benefits we may ask of them. Next slide, please. So to talk, to kind of focus in a little bit on how developers make their decisions, I wanted to, I guess, kind of note that developers, when developers are looking at an opportunity to construct a building, a development on a particular site, within the construct and the guidelines you've laid out for them, the first thing they're going to do is conduct their market research, similar to, you know, similar to many other business owners and different kinds of fields. So in doing that, they're going to look, they're going to ask themselves, what is the level of demand for the kinds of developments? And again, different developers are focused on different kinds of development. But whether I'm building housing, or let's say office or warehouse and distribution, I'm going to ask myself, what is the demand for the kind of development I'm hoping to build? We need to recognize that what developers have to do is, is kind of look at the broad range of factors that may affect a demand for their product. And many of those are very dynamic and ever-changing, you know, business cycles, as we've all seen, a kind of ongoing. The region you're in, the pace of economic growth is very important. Last couple of years, I think we've seen a lot in terms of how technology and other effects can affect our patents and retail office uses, all of those things, the demand for those are affected by, are affected by technology and other factors. We also need to be aware, or a developer is going to look at opportunities and competition from other cities and the quality of infrastructure and amenities and services we've been able to provide. That demands, when you're doing your market research as a developer, you're going to try to translate that into a set of revenues, the revenue side of the equation, where you're going to ask yourself, if I build this building, what are the kind of lease rates, the sales prices I might receive on the revenue side? Next slide, please. The next kind of question becomes, a developer will do a real estate market feasibility analysis, sometimes called a pro forma, where they're going to balance the costs against the revenues and see whether those, there's a match up there. On, for, for development projects, there's really four major sets of costs that a developer is going to look at in comparison to their revenue side. They're going to ask themselves, how much do I have to spend to buy the land? How much is it going to cost me to prepare the site and build the buildings? And again, that's going to depend on a lot of factors, material costs, lumber, steel, glass, et cetera, the costs of construction labor. There's also a set of soft costs that developers need to think about, architecture and engineering costs, marketing and financing among others. And in addition, there's a set of requirements that we as cities impose on developers through our impact fees and permit processes. And ultimately, developers are going to put these two things together. They're going to say, what are my costs? What are my revenues? And most importantly, do my revenues cover my costs? And also provide me with a certain level of profit. Next slide, please. So collectively, as some folks like to say, there's a kind of a go-no-go decision that happens here. Developers are asking themselves, are there good sites available for development? How complicated is my approval process? And as I just noted, is there a market support? What does the revenue side look like? Can I cover my costs? And how does this compare to other opportunities that I might see out there in the marketplace? Next slide, please. I think we jumped one ahead. Thank you. So kind of getting now into, when we stack up those costs, here's just kind of an illustration on the right-hand side of how a set of, your set of costs might stack up as a developer, whether you're building office, residential, or other uses. And as you can see, you know, all of those, all of those cost categories play a role. I have included a profit margin in here. And usually, there's some uncertainty and contingency over cost that adds a little bit into the mix there. So one of the questions, I think, for cities is, to what extent, if we have situations where we're finding that the revenues are not covering the costs and developers are not kind of finding, not getting to a go decision where we would like them to get to a go decision, you know, what, do we have any tools, are there any items that are in our control? We, of course, don't control business cycles. We don't control the cost of steel or construction labor. But there's certain, certain tools and levers, and we'll chat a little bit more about this later as well, that, that are pertinent. And most, I guess, most prominently, the development impact fees, which we, you know, set somewhat directly. But things like parking requirements can also play a big role on the cost side. Parking, especially structured parking, is often one of the highest costs or substantial costs for developers. And so the parking require of them makes a difference. While other components like, you know, what land uses you're allowed to build and setbacks and heights and ground floor retail can both affect the cost side as well as the revenue side of the equation. Next slide, please.
And I see there's a question from councilmember Fan.
Okay, sorry, I can't see it. Can I get?
Just a quick question. This list that you have, is that, is that by order of its impact on, on the cost of development? Or is it just?
Did you hear that, Tafion?
Yeah, I could hear that. Yeah, I could hear that. And yes, no, that it's, it's really a stacking. The order doesn't, the order is not that important. So, so it's, they're all kind of equally important in, in the mix. The size of the box donates a relative scale. But the fact that the fees and permits are above land, for example, doesn't mean that it has more of an impact. It's, it's just the way I've arranged them, if that answers the question. Okay.
Is there anything that tend to stand out in terms?
Councilmember Fan, if you could increase your microphone volume, that not just help the panelists here, but also our viewers, the audible seems to be a little low.
Is that better?
It is a lot better. Oh, great.
Okay, yeah. So is there any factor among this list that you would say stand out from the rest in terms of its impact on? More so than others?
I think that, you know, to a certain extent, you know, as a developer, when I'm balancing my revenues and costs, you know, a cost is a cost. And so in that sense, you know, they're all, there's slightly different timing of when I might pay them, but in some ways that, you know, a dollar is an equivalent to a dollar. What I, what I, what I will say is that there are, so that's, I think, perhaps that answers your question, councilmember. The, I think what, I think what we can say is some of these costs, again, the city has a bit more control over. Some of them, you know, neither developer nor city have control over. They're, they're very much, you know, decided in the broader marketplace. And some components like land costs are really part of a negotiation with, you know, with a landowner. But in terms of the costs themselves, they're all kind of additive and real in terms of that feasibility comparison I was talking about earlier.
And which costs are you referring to in which the city has more control over and can realistically mitigate?
Yeah, so, so this is something, yeah, important conversation, obviously. So the fees and permits is, is an area where cities get to set their levels. And I think the question of the right levels for fees is one that we were going to highlight later, the, the importance of having robust fees in order to help pay for infrastructure and public facilities is obviously very important. But in some cases, in, from a policy perspective, what we've seen some cities do is when they have certain land uses that are struggling to be feasible, they might provide discounts or reductions at least temporarily for certain uses to help reduce the cost side of the equation. The other, the other kind of component I wanted to highlight in terms of what the city has some control over is the, the parking, the parking cost. And in some cases, that, that would be, that would be really a subset that I haven't broken out within the construction cost. And in some cases, developers will want to build a certain amount of parking for that. Let's say that, that, you know, the office workers or the residents, for example. But in some cases, cities do ask for more parking than a developer would typically provide themselves. And so that ends up going, becoming an additional cost. So those are some examples of, you know, city influence. We, there's not a, again, several of these costs are well outside of cities' control. So it's not really like we can take these costs and say, I'm gonna, you know, I'm going to try to get 30%, get you down 30%, but there is some margin of movement that we do control that we can think about for, for certain land uses where you're very interested in encouraging them.
In your experience, have you seen cases where some of these costs, fees, for example, to affect the project to the extent that it cannot, you know, be built any, renewed any further?
Yeah, we do, we do see, we do see places, or we have seen places where the fee levels, the fee levels are high in combination with just the way the real estate market is functioning at that moment, that we see, you know, more developers making kind of no-go decisions just because they can't make it pencil. I will, I will say that in some cases, you know, there are cases where, you know, the, the market is so depleted, if you will, and we're such a down cycle that, you know, nothing we can do will make any difference. But there are some cases where costs can, can be a substantial, you know, substantial influence. And especially, I think what, what I found is especially when you're, you know, this is less for established land uses that you've seen build over and over and again in your community. But sometimes when you're trying to attract new uses for the first time and are hoping to, you know, that first development can often send a signal to other developers. There may be, you know, kind of reasons in certain cases to provide adjustments to support development feasibility, though, though, you know, fees alone will not make or break a project.
What kind of incentives have you seen work out to streamline projects in light of these challenges too?
Well, I think that what we've, the things that, the, I mean, again, the most, the kind of the simplest, the simplest approaches that we've seen is we do see, for example, some cities on non-residential development providing substantial discounts on their impact fees, partly doing courage, job creation, and/or tax generation. As I mentioned, I think, you know, items like parking can make a big difference. Of course, you know, in other cases, it's a lot harder for cities to find, you know, to directly invest in infrastructure, especially after the, you know, the ending of the redevelopment and tax increment opportunities. But there are, you know, in some cases, there are, there are tools that we look to, to support infrastructure development that in turn hopefully creates value and supports development generally. If that helps.
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you.
Great, thank you.
Tafion, just before you move on, I wanted to add one more thing that's, that you can't really see on here in that city process time and uncertainty, and that can represent another cost that the city is in, in control over to a certain extent. And so, for example, the state of California is really pushing housing right now and is privileging certain projects that have affordable housing in them, for example, with not having to go through a discretionary review process. So that means that, you know, only the planning department and not the planning commission is reviewing those projects. And they can go through a lot faster, and that decreases the developer's uncertainty and potential costs that could arise or for, because of delays and that kind of thing. And the other nuance here is the profit margin. You know, a lot of times folks say, well, hey, you know, why can't the developer just accept a slightly lower profit margin and then the project will work? And in fact, the developer usually doesn't have the money to build the project. The developer has to get financing for the project. And they're required to show a certain level of profitability for their project, or they won't be able to fund it. So this is actually, you know, not, this is real. They, they really do have to, you know, show a certain, a certain profit margin.
Yeah, thanks, Christina. And I, on the, on the profit margin point, I think we, there is a hurdle, like Christina said, that's required. And, and, and sometimes there's negotiation about how big that profit margin has to be. But, but they, in order to get financing, that does have to exist. So just a couple of illustrations I wanted to provide, just again, on just this point of development feasibility and how things balance, you know, here is a look at a, you know, it's kind of a prototype example of the kind of seven-story multifamily development that, you know, you have seen, or you might see in the future in, in your TASP metro area. And here you can see that, you know, looking at, this was, we were looking at some pre-COVID rent rates. But we were able to determine on the left-hand side, that big blue box is kind of the ultimate, what we call project value, but it's really the kind of the revenue, the ultimate value or revenue per unit. And then we were able to kind of compare that with what we thought were reasonable estimates of costs, of all the costs I mentioned earlier. And we could, we could kind of replicate how we could see a developer could get to a go, a go decision because they've, they're basically able to cover their costs and, and their profit margin. And the next slide, just to, just as And the next slide, just to just as kind of an example, I wanted to show that when we ran the kind of equivalent analysis for a high-rise twelve-story building, the main difference, we we got, as you can see on the left, what what I've shown is kind of a funding gap, which is the amount of project value is below the project cost side of the equation. And here, based, the 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 mechanics behind this, without getting into too much detail, is it just once you get to a certain height, it actually gets more expensive. Construction costs go up on a, on a per-unit basis. So our construction costs have gone up a little bit. And 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 right now, we're not seeing sufficient lease rates to cover those costs. The point here is not to say that we won't get there and that high-rise won't come to Milpitas. The point is more that as we kind of do this evaluation, all the different land uses, it gives us a kind of a sense of, hey, there's certain land uses that we think will work just fine and will, you know, that we want, that will be attracted to our city. There are others that might be struggling. And again, in some cases, we might have to wait for the market to improve. But in other cases, maybe there are, depending on how important they are to the city, there may be other levers we could try to maneuver. Next slide here, please. So bringing, bringing all of that together, we did just want to step back for a second on a couple of points and say, I think, I think when we look at the landscape, when we, when we ran our kind of, you know, average go-no-go analyses on different product types and kind of also compared it to what's happening on the ground in Milpitas in recent years, we do see that the set of uses on the left in green, those are the uses we've, we've noted as as being most active in terms of townhomes, mid-rise, residential, warehouse and distribution and light industrial. We haven't seen as much as we'd like in the way of Class A office, office R and D, and I believe high-rise residential. And I think what we wanted to note was a couple of things. This is, you know, nothing is static, right? Everything is evolving. The market is evolving, the opportunity is evolving as we develop new specific plans and we invest in those places, the economics should improve. And of course, you know, we're just coming out of this pandemic, but Milpitas has a lot of, Milpitas has its new, you know, relatively newly opened Bard Station, along with some of its traditional values of access to the freeway, relatively, at least compared to some of your neighbors, relatively modest land values, so that we think there's a lot of opportunities there. But we do want to chat a little bit in this next section. I've just got a couple more slides on. We wanted to chat a little bit about policy levels and implementation tools that, in some ways, we covered a little bit through the, through the councilman's earlier question. But if we can just keep going here, I think, again, we wanted to, one of the conversations we wanted, or one of the topics we wanted to raise today was, you know, how do we think about or what can we do in situations where we know there are land uses we'd like to come? But the development feasibility situation is tricky. And here's, you know, here's a few examples, some which have been already been mentioned, some which Christina mentioned, but just to run through them, repeat them again. You know, one of the things that we do find that in some cases, you know, small adjustments actually in the, in the height allowed, the number of stories can make a difference to development feasibility. So if there are cases where there's flexibility in that regard, and sometimes it's about hydro density or FAR, the more flexible we can be, the more we we feel like developers will get to those kind of go decisions for the kinds of development you're looking for. As Christina mentioned, time and uncertainty, you know, upfront is is a kind of, is part of the question mark when cities sorry, when developers compare different cities and think where they want to, where they want to build, how complex is the process? So the more we can do, and not all of this is within the city's control, of course, but the more we can do on that front, I think the the more attractive we will be to developers. Parking requirements, I think I've mentioned, development impact fees. Again, I think in many cases, we want to keep those fees robust and paying their appropriate, you know, their 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 share or their full share of infrastructure costs. But in some cases, we do think it's appropriate to consider reductions. You know, other, the investments, the money the city pursues and brings in from these outside funding sources and then invests in kind of the kinds of infrastructure amenities and services to bolster locations, I think really sends strong signals to to cities and really helps, sorry, to developers and helps attract more developers. And then, of course, all the efforts of your economic development department to just kind of make sure that both businesses and developers, but also, well, businesses and developers and a broad swath of folks who are kind of aware of the assets you have here in the city of Milpitas are the kind of key levers that we've noted here. And finally, on this next slide, it's just again stepping back more.
I'll, I'll go to the next slide, but I just want to let you know that councilmember has hand up as well.
Okay, sorry, I'm not, I don't know why I can't see handups. Let me just finish the slide and then, and then we'll get to the council member. And so just, just kind of more on a, on a, on a stepping back on a broader basis, I think part of the hope that we, you know, we get, hope to get to with specific plans is what we call this kind of virtuous cycle of public and private investment where through, we're able to attract developers and their private investment to build the kind of buildings we want where we can, we hope to obtain investments and fees and funding from them so we can make the kind of public investments we want to make, which in turn bolster the private, the private investments and create this this virtuous cycle. And let me stop there. And I'm sorry, Jane, can you, or can someone tell me?
Have you tools like in lieu fees, in lieu often affect a project? Does it hurt or hinder the the project as it relates to the city's long-term goals?
Yeah, that's a great question. So in lieu fees, for example, they can't, you know, it could be parkland in lieu fees, it could also be, you know, kind of parking in lieu fees. There's, there's a variety of affordable housing in lieu fees. There's a variety of different fee types out there. And I, what I would say is that, so again, in general, fees fees can be very helpful in terms of supporting city, city goals. We, we do want developers to pay fees in order to build, you know, the roads, the transit systems, sometimes the affordable housing and other parks, things that we want. I think the nuance that I'm, I'm trying to kind of introduce here is that in some cases, it's, it's, it's ideal to think of land uses, I think, in two buckets. One is those which are, you know, kind of robust and supported with with strong economics and a long history in the city. And those, though, you know, though, you know, obviously, within reason, those kinds of developments can afford to pay impact fees in lieu fees and a variety of other kinds of exactions that that might exist. It's though, it's those land uses, I would say, where we're not quite getting to development feasibility yet. But we think that some, some adjustments may be appropriate where, similar to impact fees, it would be from, at least from an economic development perspective and getting that development going, it will be preferable to moderate the level of fees we charge, not necessarily, you know, forever, but just for a period of time while we hopefully get those first developments of that kind.
Great, thanks.
Okay, I think that was the end of my stuff, section Jane.
All right, Christina.
Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. Good to be back with you, talking about Milpitas Metro. I want to go through these guiding principles and talk a little bit about how we're taking what Taipan was mentioning and trying to see that we can make, how we can make the kind of development the city has said that you want to see more feasible. And so the principles that we are working to implement are to locate a mix of uses close to one another to promote alternative modes of transportation. So if we have office and service and retail and and housing all close to one another, then people are more comfortable walking and biking. They can get to their destinations more quickly. And that is reducing number of times that people need to drive and and working towards the city's vehicle miles traveled and greenhouse gas emission goals. The second is that we are working to provide the right land uses and implementation tools that protect and incentivize commercial development in this area. So when we first started Milpitas Metro, what we all noticed is that in the district, the city really saw all of the residential development that was proposed or planned for in the plan, but really a small percentage of the commercial and retail development that was proposed and desired. And so in this plan, we're working to think about how to really increase that mix. How do we encourage commercial uses in this market that's really privileging residential uses where, where residential uses are penciling more right now in Milpitas than than in commercial uses. But, you know, the city, the city has a vision of a mixed, a mixed-use district and also this vision of an innovation district, which we're going to get into in a lot more detail. And then finally, we are promoting and enabling higher density to bring the mix of uses into close proximity to one another and also to build up this really vibrant district. And so we just wanted to pause for a moment to ask if the council agrees with these principles. And if you feel like we are moving in the right direction, and we're going to return to this, so you don't have to have all of the answers right now. But any initial impressions would be really great. And then questions as well.
Thank you very much, Christina. Really appreciate the window here to provide input as we go through tonight's agenda item. No, I think the guiding principles are pretty comprehensive. And, you know, I think the framework of what's being presented so far is really good. The city will, and the city council really has the responsibility now to, you know, provide more finer direction to things like the density, the zoning. And I hope that as our council moves forward, we really keep in mind what some of our city's priorities should be. Keep in mind the history over the last ten, fifteen years, or let's see, when was the TASP approved? What year was that? I want to guess ninety-eight.
It was
Yeah, I've missed it by ten years. Yeah, two thousand eight. And prior to two thousand eight, we really had a lot of industrial in that area, as noted on the presentation, excellent. And, you know, I think really moving towards that Class A office space, R and D, that would be, at least for me, the priority for our city. We lost over fifty percent of our industrial because of what is now the TASP. And our city did commit to over seven thousand units of housing, which many is, much of it is online, over five thousand units. Now, with that being said, I do think there is opportunities for more housing as well around the Bard Station, but really in the best interest of our city and our city budget, revenues. I hope that this council and councils moving forward will really prioritize industrial. And Class A is wonderful. Okay, let's go to my colleagues here. I'll look for my colleagues to chime in as well. This is a very important item, and we want to hear from everybody so that our consultants can have all the information they need to make more informed decisions. Next up, we have councilmember Chu.
Thank you, Mayor Tran. To answer this question, number one, yeah, your, your question is, are, is are these economic guiding principles okay with us? Like, number one, locating housing, housing, jobs, services, amenities close to each other to promote alternative modes of transportation choices, which we're trying to do right now, as you can see. I mean, based on our general plan, the new updated one, I am curious to see. Number two, how, because it's very important, like the mayor said, it's very important to protect and incentivize more commercial and industrial developments. As you know, it requires at least fifteen, at least fifteen percent, and you guys can correct me if I'm wrong, of commercial and industrial development in the, in any city to sustain the services that we need to provide to our residents. And I'm curious, I will be looking for your presentation on this one, as well as the height promoting high density to bring mixed uses into close proximity. That I'm very particular about because there are certain areas that this is doable, but there are also certain areas in our city that this will not work, on my opinion. So I'm looking to those two for, for your answers. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor Tran.
You're welcome. Thank you very much, councilmember Chu. And really to further my input on tonight with the bullets now is, yeah, I think the first bullet, it makes sense, you know, I think transit-oriented development has really been the theme in the Milpitas Metro specific area. I'm gonna start calling it that now, rather than TASP. And I, I think the second bullet here on this slide is very important as well. How much incentive our city is looking to provide for whichever type of development there is, I I, I don't have input for that tonight. I'm gonna have to think about that a lot further. But I'm, I'm certain that that discussion will go more in depth. And with a third bullet, to just further add to this developing discussion tonight is the density and I, I know that'll take some more time as well, at least for me, to have forums with the public and to receive more public input. It's just so key when you talk about higher density in Milpitas, even with proximity to the Bard Station. As councilmember Chu had noted, it's, it is right there by the Bard Station rather than just anywhere else in a more lower-density zoning neighborhood in our city. But before I go to councilmember Fan, yeah, we are, we are a small city, which is quite interesting with the Milpitas Metro area. It's not like this Bard Station is located in, in one of the biggest cities in the nation, or one of larger cities in the Bay Area, or an area off of Bard's jurisdiction with the Bard Station that is in greater need of of any type of development. I think Milpitas can be very picky in terms of, you know, how much density we want to give and what that can mean to a big corporation or developer that may be attracted to Milpitas. We certainly, I think, have the best value per square foot over in the Milpitas Metro area. And so I think for now, for higher density, anything that's of equivalent to what has been constructed there in terms of the density, I think, I think that'll slide. But to explore higher density above what's existing or approved there now, that'll be a whole process to determine. So all right, let's continue the discussion. Councilmember Fan, you're up next.
I, I know that, you know, the city is continuing to change and I, for one, am very excited about what's to come. I think there are a lot of opportunities on the horizon as we see more projects coming to Milpitas, as we see more of the, the growth that is happening. There are a lot of land use decisions that were made way before our time. And we do see certain parcels that are occupied by what I see as really stagnant revenue in the sense that the city doesn't draw much revenue or or um rather any other um economic benefits. Um I I refer to cases such as uh storage units, potentially some warehouses. Um you know, I I I see this as a potential area that we might want to look at um because they're kind of just sitting there and um there's always so many businesses uh that are looking to uh invest in the city that are um you know, looking for certain um areas that are uh compliant that um with uh their goals and and needs. Um would love to hear more uh as to uh so- some of the things that we can do uh to in in encourage uh changes to these locations. Um on on top of that, um what I'd like for the city to potentially do if if other cities are doing it is if there are tools that we can utilize to um raise revenue to acquire properties. I think the city has more um control of their vision if we actually um own the the property itself. Uh so would would love to hear your thoughts on that if uh you know, you you've seen that happen um or uh seen that uh occur in uh in some of the other cities that you work with. Um and lastly, I think that we should really uh be disciplined when it comes to um our uh land use framework. Um i- in the sense that if if we do set uh you know, plans, specific plans um that we make policies that adhere to it and approve projects that, you know, uh that that um are within that um framework. Um at the, at the same time, uh when it comes to areas that the city needs to uh address fundamentally, that's where I think the flexibility should be coming in. Uh so for example, uh housing, um you know, the that's something that I would want to incentivize if we're gonna be able to address uh this, the shortage of um uh workforce housing, the shortage of affordable housing. Uh so tho- those are my thoughts.
Great, thank you, Councilmember Fan. I'd have to agree with you. Uh I think uh as you said, I just want to really um say how how much you you made sense to me in some of the uh parcels that are there right now and and some of the uses like self-storage, not the new one, but maybe some of the other uh businesses are outdated as well. And um you know, you kind of look at the value per square foot of a certain parcels and and zoning types and uh we can maintain the, some of the same zoning types while also increasing the value of the square footage uh through many of the strategies that are outlined tonight in the presentation by our consultants. Um you know, one word that's carefully used in Milpitas is uh outdated. And uh we do have a a number of structures in our city that are outdated, not just in the Milpitas Metro area. Uh but uh really coming in from two thirty seven Main Street all the way to uh the metro area. And um I think it would be great for our city if we can take a look at every outdated parcel and structure uh to to see how we can uh plan for uh new development or redevelopment. So I I really agree with uh Councilmember Fan uh there. Um the innovation zone is really a most exciting. Uh and and obviously, the rest of the metro area, you see what's happening around the BART station. Uh there's a lot of activity, the BART station in San Jose, pardon me, the Barriessa Station, a lot of activity and discussions and meetings and things of sorts happening uh right one stop away on the tracks and uh I uh know that once uh our city uh moves forward with the plan here in Milpitas, uh we're gonna see uh just a ton of activity from our um real estate professionals and our residents as well, so. Um just a really exciting time uh to be serving and I'll go to our next uh virtual raised hand. Councilmember Dominguez.
Thank you very much, Mayor. Thank you so much, Seth, for the presentation. It's definitely um a very exciting time in our city. Um so I definitely wanted to provide some inputs and some feedback. Um in terms of the housing, I would like to echo, I think we need to look at those opportunities that we could um buy, keep as much um building space as we can in order to really bring in some revenue and some affordable housing to um middle-class uh working-class families. I think that is something um that I have not seen as um aggressively and I'm excited that we are gonna start hopefully moving in that direction. I think it's really important for us to look at the innovative ways, um again, that some of our neighboring cities are already doing it. Um I know that uh for me, definitely, it's really important important to close that last mile. I know that we all are itching to see a plan where it's walkable, especially in this particular area. But I also want to be very cognizant that we're not going to get there tomorrow, right? So what are the needs um and the gaps of service that we're seeing as we move into this development and we move into these plans? Um because I think um things like making sure that last mile, providing transportation, those are things that we could provide short-term uh to fill in the gap and and I I see our cities already doing that, you know. I I know we've gotten a couple of grant monies to to try to make that happen, so I'm definitely continuing to work. Um in terms of, you know, one of the things that I really want to see in this area as we start moving into um development is how do we pump and how do we stimulate the economy now? And how do we really begin to lay a strong foundation where everyone is supporting? There's a cycle, right? And and I want to make sure that our small businesses are not left behind um as we move into this really exciting area. Uh but there's other businesses in Milpitas that may not be on this particular area, but they're going to benefit from it, right? So just making sure that as we're moving through these guiding principles, that somehow we're able to include um the small business um element um into, you know, locating housing, jobs, services um in that particular bullet. I really want to make sure that, I think there's a way, we saw during COVID, that we could continue to support uh by closing the last mile and supporting small businesses um to ensure that we're all providing a cycle, a sus- a long-term sustainability. Um with that, I also believe that in terms of land uses, we need to make sure that we are maximizing um the return um and explore what are those use, traditional uses that maybe were passed a couple of years ago uh and really update um what we want to see in Milpitas and maximize the return because that's only going to help of our revenue. And so I think we're in a very exciting place and so um incentivizing that mixed use um class A is really important. Um definitely that, you know, I think the higher density conversation um as one council member, I would, for me, I'd rather focus on the mixed use um instead of high-rises. Um I think that's, there's something in Milpitas that is very special. Um that doesn't mean that we can't, I mean, we've seen already some businesses move a little bit higher than normal. Um but in terms of really, really um the high density, for me, it's how, that needs to be a conversation that is ongoing with our community. But I also think that um ag, um I think we need to bring, be innovative in Milpitas um to really keep that ag culture, ag element. Um there's ways of doing it and um I do hope to see that innovative uh way of keeping our ag um into our community and really building a system, a sustainability, um which is going to be great for our environment and really protecting Mother Earth and really helping um sustain, you know, elements like providing um accessible food and making sure that we're incorporating that into the economic guiding principles, which may not be traditional ways. Uh but there is neighboring cities that have been able to do that very successfully. Um and so there's models out there that I hope could serve as um leading ways that Milpitas could go ahead and implement here as well. So um I do thank all of you for your work. I it's really exciting to see, um but those are my comments. So thank you very much for the time.
Thank you very much. I uh want to um the, you know, continue this discussion. I love the way it's developing. Uh Councilmember Fan brought up a really great point about uh possible land acquisition and having the city in a stronger position uh in terms of its future development. Uh one thing that this council has discussed in the past was the Economic Development Corporation. Uh Vice Mayor has been a staunch advocate for the Economic Development Corporation. And uh I know that when I was in New York City, uh New York, the city of New York uh really uh did a lot uh with Economic Development Corporation. Uh and a lot of their development, what we see, I think, today, uh they've been um really driving uh with the city's influence. Uh there's so many areas in Manhattan, I I um, I think Hudson Yards is one area. Uh the city of New York uh really used Economic Development Corporation and um other areas in Brooklyn uh on the East River, uh Long Island City, I think, is another area uh where they brought in not just businesses but housing as well. So um if if the Economic Development Corporation uh is something that uh can help our city uh do better uh with our development, especially in the Milpitas Metro and Innovation Zone, then uh maybe that's something that we should put more emphasis on. And uh speaking of the Economic Development Corporation, let's go to the Vice Mayor Carmen Montano.
Thank you, Mayor. Um so uh the question is, do you agree with economic, with these economic guiding principles? Uh in essence, I do, but also in the context of the Milpitas Metro specific plan, which also includes the Midtown Plan and all of the Great Mall and part of the Transit Area. Um there there has to be a smart growth, you know, not just a hodgepodge here and there. So the first bullet, locating housing, jobs, services and amenities close to each other to promote alternative modes of transportation choices. That is a a good location where the Great Mall is, that the area that we are speaking about, because we do have the BART there. So we do have mass transit, we have the buses there. So that is a an ideal location. Um the sec- and the 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 first bullet also goes, lines up with the third bullet, which is promoting higher density to bring the mix of uses into close proximity. So those two, the first and the third bullet, I see those in tandem with each other. They, they're basically, you know, addressing the same thing as bringing housing uh with the mixed uses of close proximity to um transportation areas. On the s- second bullet, providing the right land uses and implementation tools to protect and incentivize commercial developments in the area. That right there is the most important of the first and the second one, because that one, we need to preserve our commercial and industrial, because once it's built and once it's gone, it's gone forever. We really be, need to be cognizant of preserving those, that uh that zoning. Uh so that, to me, supersedes the first bullet and the third bullet. Because, as you know, commercial and industry brings in more revenue than housing does in the long run. So but we ha- so we really have to ha- have some smart growth. Um Milpitas is becoming a bedroom community, meaning that it's, has more housing than it does commercial and uh industrial. And and I don't want to, you know, I think I'd only be sti- I don't want our city to be stigmatized as a bedroom community. Sure, we do have um great neighborhoods, uh but we also need to make sure that we do not um start putting high density in our neighborhoods and it it just, you know, and and it takes away from the integrity of our neighborhoods, you know, and and the integrity of our whole city. We, this is one thing that Milpitas has, that we are the envy of many other cities, is we have great neighborhoods where there's open space with huge parkland. And I'd hate to see us um start putting high density in areas so close to the neighborhoods that don't have any type of man- mass transit available. So the the, so but I know we're in the context of the Midtown um Metro Plan, the the Metro, the Milpitas Metro specific plan. So um I do agree in essence with with these guiding principles, but I just want to make sure that the second bullet, that's the one that we really need to uh be cognizant of not to give up our commercial and industrial ones, because once we do that, uh we will be uh we 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 won't, we'll just, we'll never see them again. Um the other thing I wanted to say is that, you know, our city is being transformed, but I, when when I see it transformed, it has to be smart, a smart transformation, not just, you know, wherever we can build a housing, just build a house. You can't do that. It has to be, it has to be, we have to be strategic in how we uh how we build, where we allow building uh high-density homes. And again, that has to do with the transportation, mass transit, wherever, it has to be near uh tran- mass transit. And I do love the concept of the Innovation Center, that, and that has to be near, well, it is, it's, that's the, the goal, is to be near uh mass transit, so. Um so in essence, I do agree with these economic guiding principles, but uh it's just a matter of being strategic, having that smart growth, because that's very important for our um economic well-being of our city to be able to collect those revenues to provide services for our residents. So that's it. Thank you.
Oh, that's everything, Vice Mayor. Thank you. Very wise and forward-thinking. Uh and I'm glad you brought up those issues. Uh as we uh look to redevelop the Milpitas Metro area in the Innovation Zone, uh we have to really remember uh how important uh the business uh zoning uh is for our city, because uh it allows for us to manage our operating budget better. Uh when we have, let's say, nothing but housing, then there's a imbalance. And uh if there's ever a recession, uh maybe like the one we're going through, uh or something that's even worse, where we uh have limited reserves and we have to make hard decisions on public safety. Or the economy may not, it doesn't have to be recession, it may, it may not the uh keep up with the growth. Uh and as we uh research other cities in California, uh where their budget is not able to finance uh the level of public safety uh like we do here in Milpitas, uh we might find ourselves as residents or elected officials uh wondering why our response times are are slower or if there's even a response from public safety at all. Uh I uh really have always encouraged our council here in City Hall to uh really um um focus on uh the growth of our city uh population uh with uh the growth of our city government uh and our uh public safety departments particularly uh in mind. So I appreciate your comments, Vice Mayor. Uh you're spot-on. Uh larger cities uh to the south of Milpitas, uh you know, uh they um are fighting for business, uh commercial and industrial, every single minute of every single day. And uh they are a bedroom community uh further south, and it's a challenge. Uh it's certainly a challenge for them to maintain uh the quality of life. And so um I'm really excited about uh the economic guiding uh principle. uh the economic guiding uh principle uh direction that uh we'll take going forward. Uh okay, we see a virtual raised hand. Let's go to Ned Thomas.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh just to keep moving things along, I'm gonna pick up on the comment by Vice Mayor Montano. Our next section is specifically about the Innovation District, and I think um there are some really interesting concepts that our Economic Development Department has to share. And then right after that, we have another little section, as was introduced, on Employment Lands uh Planning Policy that will also pick up on some of the comments and questions that have ma- been made. So if the council's ready to move on, I think um some of the next sections may may uh build upon the questions and the comments that have been made. It was a nice segue.
Perfect timing. Thanks, Ned.
Thanks, Ned. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Speaker Council, Alex Andrade with the Office of Economic Development. My pleasure to be here in front of you today to discuss the Innovation District. Of course, it's not the first time you've heard about the Innovation District, but you have heard it from a more conceptual perspective. Today, we're gonna dive a little bit deeper. We'll keep it brief, but we'll dive a little bit deeper. I was going to start by saying, imagine if you will, but I think you already do. What I was going to say is, imagine if you will, a place that's vibrant with people and businesses that are thriving in a pedestrian-friendly amenity-rich uh area and um near a multimodal transit. But I'm incredibly pleased to hear that you do envision that, and it's bold and it's innovative. So I'm gonna start with saying thank you. You know, what we're trying to do in the Office of Economic Development in partnership with the City Manager's Office and the Planning Department is to ensure that we put jobs near people and residents, but we also put businesses and employers near housing and residents as well. So really, what we're trying to do is transform our economy through innovation. I'm gonna talk about why, but in some ways, it's really reiterating what I've heard some of you council members say, but I have to do it because I think it's incredibly important. The reason we're doing this is to ensure that we have a long-term fiscal, healthy environment. And we need to diversify the economy in order to do that. And there's various ways of doing that, but this Innovation District is just one way of doing that. We also want to create jobs for those folks that are in Milpitas. They're the 21st century-type jobs. So this leads me to the innovation ecosystem that you have in front of hi- in front of you here. The innovation ecosystem is really the foundation of an innovation district. An innovation district is a place where people, businesses come together through ideation. They take those ideas and they move into commercialization. The assets that you see in front of you include economic assets. Think of that as the businesses. These are the cultivators, the the academic institutions, the people that come with these amazing ideas that will produce uh these products and services that will continue to change that, the way we live our lives. The physical assets, think of the places. Those are the public and private um places. And then networking, that's really the people, that's the social aspect. And when you have all three of those working together, then you have a foundation for a successful innovation district. Next slide, please. So just to dive a little bit deeper on the the vision here, I think what you see here from a visual perspective on the right-hand side, you see a building that's actually located, call it about a football field length away from the BART station on South Milpitas Boulevard. It's a one-story industrial tilt-up. I heard many of you talk about the public storage and the warehouse facilities, and it is true, this is a former industrial area. And it was a vibrant one at one place, but we're evolving, and we're evolving with Silicon Valley. So the the picture that you see there at the bottom is the way we wanna go. It's creating the spaces for office, research and development, of course, industrial and flex space. Uh we wanna ensure that there's an opportunity for creative people to come and collide through creative collisions and through this innovative ecosystem. We envision this economic development, or Innovation District rather, as a place that's, of course, close to the Transit Center um with infrastructure that includes bike paths, pedestrian-scale sidewalks, places where people can talk and gather, and then all with high-speed uh infrastructure so that technology can happen. And we envision this taking shape through uh various practices and culture that we're including creativity, innovation, inclusivity, equity, and agility. Next slide, please. So there are various benefits to develop an Innovation District. Every Innovation District around the world is unique in terms of what works and what doesn't. But for us, and I'll reiterate, because I've already said this, and I know that many of you council members believe in this, number one is to strengthen the city's long-term fiscal sustainability. I see this as resiliency planning in many way, in many ways. Uh we wanna grow the Milpitas economy. We do that through bu- business attraction, business retention and expansion. You've heard our Finance Director Lauren Lai in the last couple of months talk about a really important component to economic development, and it's diversifying the economy. This is one way we can do that. And I will say, it'll take some time. It might take five, fifteen, twenty years. But I think it's it's the right move for us. We, of course, wanna ensure that our residents are prepared and have the skills for the 21st century jobs that are gonna be coming in through these new businesses, incubators, accelerators, and academic institutions. And like the rest of the district, we wanna ensure that we're providing a sense of place there. The visual that you see here is one that was created by Jane and Christina, and you've seen it before. It is not a actual development proposal, but you see um it's a thriving area with people congregating, and it's just a a business cluster that is uh taking shape. And then the game changer that really connects all of us is that Milpitas Transit Center. It's connecting us north, south, and west through the light rail. So obviously, we're incre- incredibly excited about the opportunities here. Next slide, please. So we've worked with the City Manager's Office and the Planning Department on these principles of development in order to shape the future. Um I've heard a couple of of the council members talk about number one, and this is absolutely critical for us from the Office of Economic Development's perspective and the city, protecting and preserving our employment lands for greater long-term opportunities. We've already talked about the why, so I won't go completely into it. But if we don't do that, this becomes a moot point. I'm gonna be happy to discuss this further, but uh just wanted to make that statement. We wanna promote density uh and intensity, and you're seeing that around the residential development in the TASP and in the future um metro area. The third point here is exploring mixed-use opportunities, and this kind of relates to number one. We wanna protect and preserve the commercial development we see as primary and the residential as secondary. That doesn't mean that residential is not important, because it is. We need to meet arena numbers. We need to increase our affordable housing units. We can do that partially within the Innovation District, but there's also other areas around the Great Mall uh within the district, and of course, other areas of the city. We wanna ensure that there's incentives to encourage development. We've heard Tai Fion earlier talk about some of those incentives, as well as Christina. And we'll have to, you know, um consider those levers that were discussed earlier. We wanna encourage parcel assembly for highest and best use, pedestrian-oriented streets, activate public spaces through connecting elements like bike pa- bike paths and parks and, you know, places where people congregate, open spaces. And then, of course, exploring the opportunity for information technology and infrastructure such as broadband and utilities that would help the Office of Economic Development and the city overall to attract investment. Next slide, please. I have two more slides. These are not new slides for you. These next two slides you have seen before. Last May 5th, 2020, you approved and adopted the Economic Development Strategy, and that's where this comes from. And the reason we wanted to incorporate this into the conversation is to remind you that we have these companies that are located in Milpitas. Our niche market is technology and advanced manufacturing. We are not proposing to change that. It is our sweet spot. However, there is an opportunity to evolve. There's emerging technologies, call it artificial intelligence, uh augmented reality, 3D printing, robotics, internet of things. There are flying cars right around the corner. And so um there's opportunities for us to really start looking ahead, be visionaries and be bold, and look at concept and early R and D. In my last slide, we'll talk to you or share and illustrate the history of research and development, office, manufacturing, and warehouse development. Down at the bottom, you see uh years from 1980 through 2018. The vertical axis, you see the amount of square footage. In green is the research and development space, blue in the office, in lavender is manufacturing space, and warehouse is in purple. Now, take a look at that bottom-left corner. In 1981, or abouts, we saw uh very prolific development and investment in Milpitas. That happened for about two decades. It was non-stop. However, during the dot-com boom and the dot-com bust around 2000, you could see in this decade what happened. We essentially flatlined with a little bit of warehouse development in 2017. And the reason I'm showing this to you today is that if history tells us anything, or history, history repeats itself. I am um very much looking forward to repeating what happened between the 1980s and 2000. And I believe we are poised to do that. We have staff, the infrastructure, there's development interest. Um there are investors ready to come in and continue to explore opportunities. So I'm gonna leave you with that, but I look forward to answering any questions um once we're done with this section. So I believe I'm gonna hand it over to Christina or Tai Fion. Okay, thank you.
I just wanna take a moment here. Alex, you nailed it. Uh your economic development lens, uh it's so precise. And so I just wanna give you kudos, Alex. Jane?
Great.
Thank you, Mayor.
So next up, we have Tai Fion.
Yeah, good uh good evening again. I'm just gonna do one slide here to uh introduce um further conversation about employment lands. And I think touching on some things I spoke about a little bit earlier, um and also some of the points I think Alex made and you all made. Um just as a kind of a reminder, in terms of market prospects today, um what we're seeing when we think about our employment lands is light industrial activity, warehouse and dis- distribution activity, but not as much as we would like in the way of office R and D, Class A office. Um again, a big part of this conversation is 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 Alex has articulated, is figuring out how to preserve and protect employment lands, and also then to encourage that kind of development. So we kinda get more to, we go from kind of low um low feasibility to a kind of a yes on feasibility um on those office R and D, Class A office, and light industrial. Um I did wanna also, just to to, again, to set up the conversation, I've been working um with the Office of Economic Development, um a little bit exploring some of the um the points that you've all been making, and in particular, the general fund impact of different um land uses, as well as the opportunity to um for to s- for um employment lands development to support jobs um and salaries in the city of Milpitas. And I th- I don't think there's anything perhaps super surprising here. Um you know, the larger takeaway is, I think you you will, you all already know, is that there are positive impacts in your general fund from new employment lands development, and their positive effects in terms of jobs and wages. We um we will provide it at a later point. I think we'll be providing more detail on this. Um the other thing that we are finding, again, I don't know if it's surprising, but that the Class A office and the office R and D are providing um the strongest impact, or would provide the strongest impact, positive impact in your general fund in terms of revenues and that fiscal support you were talking about. We're also, we're also kind of providing room for um a greater number of jobs um and overall wages. We see light industrial as being positive as well, just at a kind of more moderate level, and warehouse and distribution uses providing positive but smaller um smaller positives. So that's just a bit of background on um unemployment lands. And now I think it's back to you, Christina, um for the next slides.
Great. Um hello, everyone. So what we have been doing uh since we saw you last to talk about our draft land uses is really working with the folks, the staff of the city, both in planning and in economic development, to think, you know, how should we be preserving employment lands? How should we be really optimizing Milpitas' longer-term opportunity to have a very strong commercial core that will, that will match and complement that residential core and that residential density that you're currently seeing. And so we have brought forward this more um more refined land use map. And essentially, what you can see here is in the lighter blue, uh we're proposing more industrial space. You know, is is it gonna be, in our proposal, approximately a 2.5 FAR maximum between one and one minimum and 2.5 maximum. FAR, that's what's proposed in the general plan for the Innovation District, so we're sticking to that number. And we would, we would allow more warehouses and um and industrial spaces in that end. Then as you get towards the darker blue, the darker blue, we would anticipate to potentially be a little bit more intense, but really not to see that kind of warehouse use so close to the BART station. Uh we would allow hotels in any case, uh in case those are appropriate. And then in the green, what we would do is we would suggest that those parcels could potentially be mixed-use parcels, but in order to see that commercial space develop, in order to see that employment base be strong, and then, you know, that that follows through to the the revenue side for the city as well. We would suggest that it would be acceptable for folks to do mixed-use projects, but they would need to build a base of, or, you know, it could be anywhere throughout the the building or or on the site, but of at least one FAR, that's, you know, one building that would theoretically cover the parcel, but it can be arranged in different ways um before you would get to build that residential. And then you could go up to the higher densities that are similar to what we've been seeing in the rest of Milpitas Metro. Um and so we're gonna ask, I think, you know, in just a couple of slides, we're gonna get to some more questions. So you can just think about this question. What do you think of these, this land use direction to incentivize commercial development and to to work on making the vision that Alex was describing real? Next slide, please. So here, you can see this in a little bit more detail. Um the the bluish colors would be land uses where commercial was uh was required. And the other sites in purple and in brown would be where purple is mixed use, and then, and then the brown is purely, purely residential. And what's important here to to note is that as we designate these these commercial sites, um we would not be able, the city would not be able to use these sites for the housing element, which is upcoming. Um but that's a decision that the city is proposing to make in order to really preserve those employment lands and to preserve those commercial opportunities. Not to say that they couldn't have housing, but um that they wouldn't necessarily be able to u- be used in the housing element. That said, there is huge capacity for housing, both in Milpitas Metro and in the Gateway Main Street Plan area. Um so that's not necessarily concerned, but something that you should, should be aware of. Next slide, please. So let's just talk through some potential policy levers that the city could engage to uh make this employment land and and commercial land vision real. One of them is to protect and preserve those employment lands through land use designations, which is what we were just saying, you know, you you need, if you're gonna build on this site, to be building commercial, potentially industrial R and D. And to invest revenue in Innovation District-supported public improvements and infrastructure. So for example, we would design an updated task fee structure. This would happen after Milpitas Metro Plan is completed to support like a bridge over Barriessa Creek that directly hooks BART into the Innovation District neighborhood that we've been describing. Um and it could also be streetscape improvements and that kind of thing to make the district appealing. Uh offer some flexibility in terms of density and height to support development economics. You know, sometimes you need a certain amount of height to make a project pencil out, to make it uh feasible. To consider reduced parking requirements for employment uses in the Transit District, as Tai Fion was mentioning. Um although we don't all think of our cities in terms of parking, this is really a major driver for um for both the design and the cost of of developments. And you're seeing more and more employers really privileged using public transportation, or, you know, obviously, in some cases, use their own buses. Um we could also consider reduced development impact fees on office and office R and D uses. Again, this is not something that we have to fully consider the implementation of in Milpitas Metro Plan, but it would come up when it's time to update that that tath. Tai Fion, did you have something that you wanted to add?
Um I was just gonna to to know, Christina, I think one of the um, one of the ideas that was mentioned earlier was the concept of um looking at land acquisition as a as a kind of method um to support future development. And I just wanted to note that- And I just wanted to note there that I think that we have seen in cases where cities or even transit agencies own land, they have the opportunity to combine that with, you know, private development investment to help incentivize certain kinds of development. I think that the big challenge there is just that land is expensive. And so, you know, we, in order to, in order to kind of add that to our list, I think we just need to think about whether we have the, the funding and, and the capacity to take on those kinds of efforts on a really substantial scale. And, and perhaps we do, though it's just one, one thing to think about there.
Thanks, Taifian. All right, next slide, please. So now we are proposing that we go into another discussion. We do not have a bunch more slides after this, but we have covered a lot this evening. So please let us know if you have any questions. And then we have these fees for the city to consider. I know they don't all have to be answered right now. But sort of think about, think about these questions. If you do have answers, we'd love to hear them. Let me let you know what they are. So first of all, which developments can afford fees or investments in public improvements and other benefits? Taifian was talking a little bit about how the more established uses tend to be better able to afford these fees. Which developments need support or incentives in order to be feasible? Which requirements that the city puts in place are critical versus optional to the council? So this includes parking ratios, for example, fees for priority uses. So that would be fees that would encourage affordable housing, for example, or infrastructure investment. Which land uses are worth protecting? So, you know, in some cases, the market is pushing the city one way. Right now, that's towards housing. But the city can protect land uses, can protect certain areas of land for, for future development, for other land uses. And then what funding tools should we consider? Those can include development agreements. So, you know, if, if we permit you to do X development, then we would like you to build Y park, you know, in the Great Mall sub-district or something like that. Or, you know, do we want to start thinking about something like tax increment financing? And then, of course, updating the, the TADAF fee structure.
Awesome. I just want to say, I'm so excited to have this discussion right now. The Innovation District is, I just think it's one of the greatest plans here or plan within a plan. It's just so exciting what's happening right now. And it's such a blessing to be a part of the discussion and to provide input and further direction. I know one day it's going to be realized, the Innovation District, and it's going to be gorgeous. It's going to be some of the best architectural structures and designs. And we get to start here as a city government to do the public management and policy side of it. So, you know, I, when I think of Innovation District, it's really any type of incentives is, I, I look at it as more of an investment. If those investments or incentives are needed, depending on market conditions, I think that's where the kind of the challenge is to determine what kind of incentives would we be open to, or if they're even needed, depending on the need of local companies in local, in our local economy. So I'll go down the bullet points here and then we'll move along to the council, the rest of my colleagues in council. So I, well, you know, I do also want to note that a lot of these fees we really need for our city. You know, the task fees over the last decade or so have gone back into the task. And I can recall studying the 2008 task and seeing, you know, hundreds of millions of dollars in task fees that our city has collected or should have collected in different areas. I don't want to do a pop quiz on our city staff, but, you know, one question I would ask is over the past, since 2008, about 13 years, how many dollars have we collected in task fees? That's a pop quiz question, but I'm not going to ask our city staff. But going forward, and maybe we can get that number maybe tomorrow. But I think going forward, we're going to need some fees. And so, you know, we'll certainly have to make some decisions as we can going forward with incentives and things. So I think when it comes to housing, I'll just kick it off, housing development. I'm not really in a position to support, you know, incentives or, you know, or any type of waiving of fees, just because, you know, I, I think I've seen a lot of good fees coming in the past. So the second bullet, I'm not sure if I answered the first bullet, but I'm just going to move on to the second bullet. I, you know, I'm pretty open to business developments, industrial or commercial. I'm, I'm open to discussion about supporting any type of development there. But, you know, really, we have to look at the real estate and the BART extension to downtown San Jose or the airport, whichever it is. They're, they're, they're really encountering so many roadblocks in terms of their funding. And when I think local companies in our local economy, world-class companies even are looking for a place to do business, you know, I think those options are starting to be limited to Barriessa and Milpitas and maybe some of the East Bay BART station areas. But I'm open to having a discussion for commercial and industrial development, possible incentives, requirements, next bullet, requirements, critical versus optional. I'm just looking at parking ratios. You know, our council recently made a decision to sort of reduce some parking regulations for one of our hotel projects, or a few of them are hotel uses, I should say. And I think to maximize and incentivize industrial or commercial or office development in the Innovation District, I'm for not even requiring much parking. You know, obviously for the disabled, certainly requiring that. Maybe limited parking requiring that, but there are other modes of transportation, obviously, that folks take to their workplace. So in terms of requirements, you know, I think that'll help out a lot to maximize the development over all those acres. I'm going to stay away from the fees tonight. Moving on here, next bullet, which land uses are worth protecting? I think we've heard that thoroughly over the past hour or so. And so I'm, I'm not going to speak much to that, but certainly that is a very important bullet. And then the last bullet before we go down the virtual raised hand line is what other funny tools to be used? I think that was mentioned earlier too. So I know folks were taking notes. All right, next up here, Council Number Two.
Thank you, Mayor Trent. Before I can answer any of these, I think it's related to what I'm going to ask first. And it's the slide that, I'm sorry, Mr. Rice? It's your slide, the employment lands, prospects and impacts. This one. This one has to be matched with Christina's slide, the one that shows the different colors of blue. This one. So if you go back, so what I would like to see is, what is it now? You identified all these different types of zoning, whatever type of development, like industrial warehouses, distribution and office R and D and Class A offices. So what I'm looking at is the way I logically think about this is what percentage of these will change? And then if you go to the next slide, if we do this, do you see what I'm trying to say? What, what percentage which will change? If you're, if you're looking, it starts with a control, control percentages. And then you move to this one and see the increase or decrease depending on what the data will say. And that's where I'm coming from. I think we need that data. Kind of clear, Christina?
Yeah, yeah. And I think that I can answer that question. So essentially east of Barriessa Creek, especially in that southern portion where public storage is and so on, that is really that light industrial use is public storage. There are a few, you know, low-slung warehouses and so on. And then across, across the way, there's some similar uses. And I actually don't know all of them off the top of my head, but the trend is to move from that light industrial, low-scale warehouse typology, where you have the one-story tilt-up building to denser R and D uses, where you're getting more stories.
I understand the concept, but what you're trying to do, what I'm trying to get is to, where we go, where we're going in terms of if we adopt what your suggestions are, suggestions are, what's going to happen? Because we need to know that percentages now. And because we have a limited land supply and that's I'm worried about. And to be, to be more close to our goal is to know exactly where we're going.
So Jane, can you switch to that other slide?
Pardon me?
I was just asking Jane to switch the slide. So, so the thought here is that we would move, you know, we don't have absolutely control over the land uses. We would only be allowing these two uses on the left in that lighter blue area, but we would be largely shifting over to the two uses on the right, office R and D and Class A office.
If you, if you recommend it, you must have an idea what percentage you're trying to get. That's what I'm trying to do, I mean, to find out.
So approximately 80%?
Pardon?
Approximately 80%, but of course, we don't have absolute control.
Yes, I understand that, I understand. Because development will happen in many, many years. But we try to, because you're going to be gone and I'm going to be gone, you know, many years from now. If we have a control in terms of this is where we're starting, let's say 25%, and this is what we're trying to achieve in this many years, 80%, you said, in like on the 10th year, are we close to 80%? That's what I'm trying to get, to give some guidelines to the next council members or the next people that are coming here, making decisions. Because if we don't give that to them, they're not going to know if we're trying, we're even close to the goal.
Can I offer something if that's okay? So in the 2008 task, the amount of commercial land was set at a nice generous number with the, with the expectation that there would be that kind of commercial and office use. Yet by the time we got there in 2019 to just evaluate as part of this early part of the project, we realized that only like 10% of that was realized. So even if we set the goal and want to know what the percentage is, that is something that the market, you know, it has its own timing. However, we are setting the goal nice and high here for them, for, you know, the commercial development to happen. And we're hoping, giving plenty of space within the plan to make sure that there's, there's enough here for them to do what they need to do. I hope that helps clarify a little bit. I'm not sure that we're answering your question quite perfectly.
That's what I'm trying to say. I mean, if you set a goal, you need to know how we're doing in terms of the number of years, let's say, two years from now. Because we have to make decisions on, based on your recommendation on the blue, light, blue thing, right? And, and we need to find out, you know, every decision we make, we should be referring to that goal and to that status. That's what I'm trying to do. We can't just say, this is it, and then forget about it. Like you said, from 2000 something eight, we only did 10% of the goal. That's not acceptable. We have to be precise. We have, even if it's, it's, it's close to it, but not to that extent of 10%. So what I would like to ask is, based on this, this slide, come up with a, with a goal, each one of these categories, based on your recommendation and how we will develop those areas that we have. And, and we will try to get close to it in preserving our commercial and industrial, our revenue gen, revenue generation land. That's what I'm trying to say. Is that possible?
So, and Taifian's going to, Taifian's going to jump in. One, one thing I, I just want to say off the top of my head is that development patterns aren't linear and market trends aren't linear. So interestingly, with the task, nothing happened for a long time. And then you started to see some townhomes. And then you started to see an incredible amount of, of development. It really ramped up like this. So it may well be that that is the case in this, in this district. And what we will do in the plan is to establish times to essentially check in on the plan, to do this kind of process again, like, hey, we didn't get that development that we thought we were going to get, but we still really want it. And so we're going to set aside these lands. As part of the specific plan, we will be establishing land uses and zones for each of these parcels in the district. And so the city can leave them as they are, but our recommendation is that you, you essentially establish a framework for what you want. You know, it's not something that you're going to be updating every, every two years.
I understand that. I, I understand exactly what you're saying. But what I'm trying to do is to give us guidelines through, through the next few years, even to the 10th year or 20th year, that, that we're, we're close. I think every decision that we will make as a council, I will see that the original stat, statistics going towards this recommendation and how are we doing? Let's say we make a decision in the next two months or this year. I said, how are we impacting the recommendations that you guys gave us? Do you see what I'm trying to, to say? I'm trying to get some guidelines on how we will make decisions based on your recommendations. That's all.
Jane?
I understand that there's a lot of factors into it, but in order to get where we're going, we need to have some kind of a roadmap to get there.
Ed, did you want to, I heard you, Ned. Let's, let's, let's provide information to the discussion here. Thank you very much, Councilman Ruchu. We're still, we're still discussing this. Let's check in with Ned real quick.
Thank you. I'm sorry to interject. I thought it might help, and this is something that we can look at if I described a little bit of our strategic thinking on this map in particular. And what I'd like to say is on the east side of Barriessa Creek, the general plan calls for the Innovation District. And that's where we started with this plan, yeah, in that general area on the north and the south side of Montague Expressway. But in the last several weeks, as we've been talking about it and talking with economic development, we recognize that that's kind of a longer-term strategy for development of Innovation District. It will take a little bit longer time because the land uses will, will need to transition over to what we would like to see as far as Class A office and R and D and so forth. But so then we started saying, well, what about right around the BART station or the, or the transit station? Are there other opportunities that we could look at that might occur more quickly? And specifically, I'm looking at that intersection where South Milpitas Boulevard crosses Montague Expressway. Those properties to the west, they're on the north and the south, right now, under the task, are designated for residential development. And so as we talked to economic development, we realized, well, maybe there's an opportunity here to have those, rather than developing more residential there, maybe there's an opportunity for us to develop employment lands there. And we kind of expanded our, our idea of the Innovation District. And part of the thought there was that it, those, those properties are more likely to transition to the types of development we're talking about, office and employment lands. That may happen sooner than the, the properties to the east. That may happen sooner than the, the properties to the east. And then also I would say the same thing would occur on around the south side of the, of the Great Mall site, where the hotels and there's, you know, the Stratford School is there and there's some office buildings there now. So what I'd like to suggest, and maybe we can take a look at this Jane and Christine and Typhian is, there may be a way, if, if we're thinking in that terms of phasing and a strategic approach to how the Innovation District would develop, perhaps we could come up with a capacity on the properties that are there at the intersect, we call it the magic corner, the, the magic corner. And that, and we would have a milestone of a certain percentage of the, of the development that would occur there. It's, it's likely, you know, we would, we would assume that the next area that might redevelop would be over at the south end of the Great Mall. And we could come up with sort of, maybe we'll call it Phase Two or, or Horizon Two, that, and how much capacity we think might occur there. And then finally in Horizon Three, we would look at the east of Berriessa and come up with a number there. That would at least, I think that gets us a little closer to what you're talking about, Councilmember Chu. Perhaps we could, we could, I think we could actually come up with different numbers. It would be just a goal or an object, you know, we're, we're reaching toward this level of development. You know, all, everyone agreeing that we know it's really driven by the market. But maybe in each phase, we could come up with a certain amount that could occur in that, in a certain timeframe, five years, 10 years, 20 years, that sort of thing.
I love that Ned. I love that. That's exactly what I was thinking about. That, that, that is perfect.
Few milestones that we, we could see how it's doing along the way, yeah.
Phase it in and then the milestone at that time. Awesome. Thank you so much. Thank you Mayor.
No, no, thank you. I love this, I love this part of this question actually. I, you know, the Councilmember Chu, I, I know you, you want to see the Innovation District this sprint through the whole finish line at some point in time with tremendous victory. And I know how much revenue generators mean to you because you want to ensure the city is fiscally sound. And I just, I totally get it. And I tell you, in terms of development, Innovation District is the best bet in the whole city. Just looking at the map, thank you very much Ned. We're, we're even looking to put employment lands, I love that term. Employment lands were previously other leaders in the city officials thought residential. But we're, we're talking employment lands and I love it because it hasn't been that type of conversation in the past. And such a great group of leaders now to, to have that discussion. Okay, great. Let's keep the discussion moving. Next up here, we have Councilmember Fan.
Thank you. I want to start off by saying, by saying I really agree with what Christina said earlier about how development isn't linear, you know, the economy, economic trends changes. And, you know, sometimes that's why we would need to be, be flexible with some of our goals as the economy adjusts. Going down this list, I want to just jump straight to lands that are worth protecting. You know, maybe it's not so much, we should be thinking about certain lands to be preserved because it might not be realistic, you know, for that property owner, for the city long term. But rather thinking of it as what kind of uses can we add? What kind of land, land uses can we increase? So, you know, when, when I take a look at, you know, some of the parcels I was referring to earlier, how do we incentivize them to actually convert to something that is useful for the city? That's something that I think we ought to consider. And how far do we go to, you know, convince them? There's also a couple of properties. Can you pull up the map again? So, okay, so to, to the right over there, is that all Milpitas jurisdiction is? Is any of that outside of Milpitas? All Milpitas?
I'm sorry, the hatched area is San Jose.
Okay.
There's, there's some consideration of annexing that. And Ned has more if you want to hear more.
Yeah, Ned, you want to jump into it?
Just really quickly, we had a meeting earlier today with Laughco in the city of San Jose to talk about that property and the other one that's hatched on the south end as well. Both of those, either a developer or a property owner has approached the city and would like to redevelop the property. But rather than facing the difficulty of developing over a, a boundary line and working with two different jurisdictions, both the developer and the property have expressed an interest in working with the city of Milpitas to have those properties annexed into the city. So we're, we're working on that. It'll, it'll be, take us a few months and we, we've got to get all the parties together. So, but we, we initiated that process just today.
Yeah, no, I, I think that's, that's really important. I think perhaps it would behoove us to memorialize all this into policy so that, you know, in the future, when there are parcels that make sense for us to annex, that we would annex it under our plan, if that makes sense. And, and that way, you know, obviously we would have more control of the property, but also add on to the uses that, that we do need. And can we go back to the questions? Yeah, in, in terms of the, which developments can afford fees or, or not? I, I think it's more so the question of what else can we do? Like it, it can't just be fees, I think. To enable businesses to actually move at the speed of business, they should have options that, you know, they, they can work with, but at the same time needing the, the city's fundamental and long-term needs. In terms of parking ratios, look, this is the metro plan. So I lean towards less parking requirements to incentivize public transit to, and also to reduce the carbon emissions. I think that's always been a, a long-term goal of the cities. And in terms of funding tools, I don't know if any of you have worked with cities that deal with the federal Opportunity Zone Program? I don't know if there's another window for cities like us to participate. But I, if, if there is, that's something that I know a number of cities have really utilized to create really amazing projects. Off the top of my head, San Jose with the Google projects and the, the student housing projects, all because of this tax incentive that allows folks to designate certain areas for special funding. So if, if any of you have worked with that program with your previous clients, would love to hear more about it. Definitely something that I think our city should take a look at and perhaps explore with our federal representatives. See if, if we qualify. And yeah, that's, that's it on my end.
Yeah, I see a virtual raised hand. Alex, did you want to add to Councilmember Fan's discussion?
Yes, Mayor, I just wanted briefly respond to Councilmember Fan. He mentioned we should be looking at other things other than fees and what else we could, what else can the city do? And just to remind you all, there are such tools in the toolbox as development agreements. And I think we heard from Christine earlier, in real estate, it's very much a cliche, but time is money. There's an opportunity for us to work with the planning department, with building, building a life safety to develop responsibilities and perhaps develop a certainty package. There are things known as transfer development rights, swapping of land. We talked about the annexing into Milpitas. The city manager's office, planning, economic development, we can all help in parcel assembly. That's sometimes a complex and a lengthy process, but we will be working with the development community in that respect. Thank you.
Yeah, if, if I can just add on to that. Yeah, and I, I think this is something that would go a long way if the city is more involved at the pre-application process. A lot of the time, developers don't really know the full potential of what they can do because these conversations haven't, you know, been occurring at that pre-app level yet. You know, if we sit down with them, we lay out all the incentives that we can cooperate with them on, perhaps they would see a greater project come to fruition. So something, something to consider. The, the land swap, I, I think is crucial. You know, when, when we take a look at the requirement for, for developers to build a park on site or affordable housing on site, sometimes it can be challenging because of the location. So if, if we're able to work out so that they can still meet those requirements, but perhaps build those units elsewhere or build a park elsewhere that still fits into our, you know, Parkmaster plan, that level of flexibility, I think, can help a project be accomplished more realistically.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Councilmember Fan. I agree with you as well with the parking requirement with possible Class A office buildings. I think by 2021 here, folks can take the BART or the Light Rail or live within the workplace or if there's business travelers utilizing future office space, they can have other modes of transportation as well, rather than their own personal vehicle. Appreciate you, Councilmember Fan. Let's keep this discussion going. I really want to keep it going. It's been, I'll do a time check. It's been two hours. Let me check in with Ned real quick. Ned, what, the San Jose land, what's, what is currently on those lands that are sort of shaded Ned?
So the parcel that is adjacent to the southbound on-ramp to, yeah, right there to the I-680, it's a vacant parcel. It is, as far as we know, it's owned or controlled by the San Jose Water Company. As I look at the map, this is a remnant parcel that was really left over when, probably when the freeway went through and it was cut off from a much larger parcel that extended to the east. And so it, it's always been there and it, but it has access from, it has no access from city of San Jose. It's accessed off the cul-de-sac that you see there. And so it, to me, this parcel makes a, a great deal of sense to annex in the city. It's about 3.5 acres. And, and it's in San Jose, it, their general plan land use designation is something called public quasi-public. So it's usually land that's just reserved for a, a public purpose. But their zoning doesn't match. The zoning is actually residential. It's an extension of the, the residential development you can see to the south. So I think that we, we would like, I think it makes a great deal of sense, a very practical purpose, that it would be annexed into our city and then combined with the parcels immediately to the west as into a larger development. It's great freeway coverage.
Exactly, perfect for business. And then the one on the, on the southern portion of the map.
Yes, the southern portion is actually very interesting. The, the property, so the, the, it's, this is called Northwoods Plaza. On the, the north side, the purple that you see here in the city of Milpitas is the small shopping center and there's a, a small grocery store that's there. And the parking lot is actually in an L shape to the south. And I say L, as upside down L shape, right on the corner of that is a gas station and AMPM store. So the, other than the AMPM store, all of the parcels, there are two in Milpitas and three in San Jose. There's some very small triangle parcels that are clearly remnants that were left over when the boundary line was drawn very arbitrarily through the property. And I think this, what we decided today in talking to Laughco is that we would focus in on this property first because it, we, we have a, a developer who's interested in purchasing the property. The longtime owners are interested in selling and they would like to redevelop it. We're working with them to get, it would likely end up being some type of mixed use with residential to, in the back that would be similar to the, the parcel that's surrounding it, the tan parcel that you see. That's an existing multifamily development. And then along capital, we would like to preserve some sort of commercial development that makes sense to us. And it, it would make a lot of sense again to develop this property, all, all of those parcels that are under the common ownership as one development. It could be done with two and they could, but they would have to work with both jurisdictions and they would have to keep buildings off the line, et cetera, et cetera. So to streamline the process and get a better development, I think it makes a lot of sense to annex it into the city. So we'll work on that.
AM PM, AM PM gas station, is that what that is?
It is, yeah.
Okay.
Is that, is that the?
Yeah, great.
Next to the blue note?
So it's the blue note as well, right? The, the Coliseum Pizza, Lucky Mark, yeah, that's that whole shopping center.
So this actually goes to some of the comments I heard earlier tonight about preserving the opportunities for our small businesses, some of which you just mentioned. So in, in working with that developer, although they would, I, they, they've indicated that they would like to do the entire site and redevelop it as residential development. This is one of the, this is why we're asking the question, are, are there some lands that we should preserve? And I think in this case, we, we have heard clearly from the council that if there's an opportunity here to preserve some commercial space for some of those smaller businesses and then we should do so. That, that gives us a little bit more strength when we talk to the developers and getting the type of development that the council would like to see in this area.
Okay, great. Appreciate that. All right. Let's keep it going here. Next up with the virtual raised hand, Vice Mayor Carmen Montana.
Thank you, Mayor. Looking at this map, it's the one to the far right that you spoke about earlier. Is that the one next to the printing shop? It's, there's nothing there. It's, yeah, that one, yeah. I think there's a printing, Hunford, print, printing shop? Is that the Hunford, next to Hunford Printing Shop?
I believe that printer shop is further up on Milpitas Boulevard. It would be just north of where the, the colored parcels here. And there is a small vacant, actually over on Milpitas Boulevard, just right in there. Yeah, Hunford is right in there.
Oh, I see. Yeah, okay. Yeah, okay. But that would be great. That would be great if we can annex that somehow. That would be, that would be beneficial for our city. So going back to the question, the, the slide that we were working on, the last one. Yeah, discussion items for city council. Which developments can afford these investments in public improvements and other benefits? Can you expand on that? Are you talking about new developments or old developments that have? So can you expand on that? So I can better understand.
I, I could, but I, I'm going to pass it to the expert, Typhian. Do you want to talk about that a little bit more?
Sure. Could you just, do you mind repeating the question, Christina?
So, yeah, sorry.
Go ahead.
Oh, Council.
And just, just talk a little bit more about the first question and what we mean. Do we mean old projects, new projects?
I see. Yeah, we're really, we're talking really about new development projects and. I see. Yeah, we're really, we're talking really about new development projects and the idea here is that, you know, some of, some of this is, is relates to the feasibility work that I was doing earlier and showing you earlier. And really as a kind of a question of, I think as someone else put it nicely, there's certain land uses that are doing well, are pretty robust. And so, you know, my instinctive recommendation would be that you don't need to, you know, kind of reduce fees or think about reducing fees on those. And, you know, I think I have some ideas of which those, which ones those would be, which developments. And so I think, I think there's a, I mean, in my mind, part of the question is, is perhaps the first bullet and the second bullet kind of go together. So the second bullet, I think I would, I would be more interested in is which, which kinds of developments would be appropriate from your perspective to support or provide incentives to? You know, I definitely think that we know from the work we've done that the kinds of developments you want to see that we're not seeing, whether it's Class A office development or, you know, perhaps high-density house, you know, high-density housing residential, I'm not sure if that's in the mix. But some of those are those, are those uses for which you'd be supportive of providing incentives to. I think there are certain ones, I believe, and someone mentioned this earlier, like mid-rise residential development that we're seeing that is pretty robust. And so I don't think it, I don't, I don't think it needs a, I wouldn't recommend necessarily a fee reduction because I'm not sure if it needs a fee reduction, if that helps at all.
Yeah, so when you, when you say can afford fees, I, I'm looking at task fees. Those developments that are near mass transit BART, they need to have, you know, we need to charge fees, that, you know, some type of fees, because we need those, that, those monies for the infrastructure for any, any type of development there. So that right there is, it's a given to me. Number two, which development, which development needs support or incentives? You know, we used to have the redevelopment agency. That was a really good program, but you know, that, I guess it was some abuse from cities that used it for the wrong reasons and the governor took that away. But now I'm thinking, well, which farmers need support? And the, the ones that really need support and incentives are those, those businesses or those developments that will create, well, that would generate income, income revenue for cities. Those are, and those again are the commercial and industrial. So those are the ones that need some type of supporting incentives to make sure that it could move forward. Number three, which requirements are critical versus optional? When you're talking about rate, parking ratios, fees for priority use. I would say that, again, we're trying, those businesses that are near mass transit, having heavy parking ratios is, is good, just like we did with the hotels. And that, that will force people to start taking mass transit. And again, fees for priority uses, I, I agree with that. Which land uses are worth protecting? And again, commercial industry. Then are there other funding tools to be used? I do, I do, I did look up Councilmember Fan's opportunity zones. Those are, that's, those are tax incentives investors to, for investors to reinvest capital gains into long-term investments in communities designated for economic development. So we might not, we might look into that. I think that's a, might be a good tool. And then some type of trade-offs with developments, development agreements. And tax increment financing. Can you give me an example of tax increment financing? Would that be a bond or something like that?
So that, you know, so as, as you mentioned, under the old redevelopment system, there's, there was a tax increment would come out of redevelopment. That's kind of basically taking a portion of property taxes that would then get invested as infrastructure into the, that, that tool, as it was, has been kind of eradicated, as, as you noted. So now there's some other tax increment financing that exists. One of them is called Enhanced Infrastructure Financing District. And so some communities are exploring the use of that tool, which is really a way of shifting property taxes and, and kind of investing them in infrastructure. So that's one example of a kind of tool that's available that some cities are thinking about.
Oh, yes, that's, uh, sounds like, you know, finding different ways that, to generate income to, to develop these developments that will ultimately generate income for our cities and for our residents. So, yeah. Overall, I think, you know, my, my concern is that we just need to make sure that we keep a balance, you know, and you gotta, you have a scale right there. Everything has to have a balance. I mean, you can't have too much of, too much high-density housing. It has to be, it has to be a balance. And, and I'm hoping that we will, you know, with your, with your help, we can move forward with that. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Vice Mayor Montana. And sort of a really good segue here, I want to take a moment to talk about the fees, task fees, which will now be sort of Milpitas Metro fees. And I had mentioned earlier, I, I read a binder, which the Vice Mayor actually handed to me my first day on the job. Carmen Montana, she handed me a binder and it was a pretty thick binder, it was about the task in 2008 and, and sort of the, the fees that were expected to sustain a lot of the development cost on the city side and such. And I had asked earlier for, I said, I kind of want to do a pop quiz for city staff and, and there's Nickling that tells me they have the answer. I want to go through our city manager, Steve McHarris, if you can, Steve, direct us to the right person who can share for the benefit of the council and our public, how many, how many dollars in task fees that we've collected over the years? And so if Steve can direct us to the proper expert here in the city to, to share with our community, just how huge the task fees have been.
Yeah. Sorry.
Just pop on and give us a rundown on what we've got, what we've collected.
Hi, Mayor Council. The first collection of task fees started in 2012. And since then, we've received approximately $176.6 million in task fee. And we have 46 million available now for future infrastructure projects.
Thank you. Oh, I know we're happy to hear those numbers. Thank you, Orin. All right. And I, and you know what? Our city staff is so amazing. You know, just really very responsive and quick with providing information. So I'm, I am very happy for that answer and it means a lot to our community too. All right, that's just an idea, folks, of our task fees that we've collected and I'm sure going forward with the amazing Milpitas Metro Plan and the amazing Innovation District a, a plan as well, if I may say. There's so much opportunity to put more money into our community. Next up with the virtual raised hand. Let's see, I did see a virtual raised hand up, but now I no longer see a virtual raised hand. I want to invite any of my colleagues that would like to provide comment. This is, will be the time we are on the slide for feedback. I just, if there's any further virtual raised hands for comment. If not, it appears that we're kind of getting toward a, sort of a conclusion. Okay, that's the virtual raised hand. Here we go, Vice Mayor Montana.
Oops, sorry. I just want to make a concluding statement that these commercial industrial lands are so important because we are, folks are now buying online and some of these, we need those buildings for warehouses for, and, and we, we are a global economy now. So many other countries look for warehouses and spaces to, to transport those goods and services to the community. So it's, it's imperative that we protect these industrial lands. So those are just my thoughts. The world is changing and the market dictates everything. And those of you that have taken economics, you know that, that's, that's the way it goes. You know, we might be, it might not go as fast in building in, because you mentioned we had 10%, but in that area, but yet i- in the next couple of years, it might just take off. So everything is all very, you know, it just, it's fluid. Just, it has its life of its own. So the market dictates and it has its own life, but we need to make sure that we have those, that land available for the future needs of society, business. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. And next up with the virtual raised hand, we have a council member, Dominguez.
Thank you very much, Mayor. First and foremost, I'll be really quick. I know we've talked a lot about a lot of different things. So personally, I, I would love to prioritize, you know, workforce development lands. Again, I think Alex touched on that and that is so important. So I think we really need to move away, personally, I think, from the warehousing. We need to make sure that it's, again, maximizing those, the ability for us to generate revenue. And we need to move into emerging technologies and really be a city that is going to provide that landscape to be forward-thinking and that we are going to accommodate, to ensure that we are working with our, you know, development community. I think it's important for us to, yes, as we're looking at fees, I think that is something we need to look at. I think some of the fees compared to other cities, that's definitely an area that we could improve and update to ensure that we are in the competitive market with our neighboring cities. In Milpitas, I do believe we, we are the gateway technology. We, we definitely are the gateway to Silicon Valley. So I think it's time for us to maximize the opportunity that we have. Opportunity zones is something I know both Councilmember Fan and myself have been talking about for quite a while. So definitely making sure that we are on the forefront for any opportunities that are coming up on the horizon to ensure that we are applying for that funding that's coming from the federal level. And to really maximize these opportunity zones, we, we all know where they're at thanks to some previous staff reports. And so I don't, I don't want to move a lot of comments into that. Personally, I think parking ratios, I still stand on my feet on, on the way on previous votes that I have had on this council. I do believe that our community, it's, it's something we need to really look at. I personally would like to preserve parking ratios and use technology, especially emerging technology, to provide additional parking spaces. Because what happens is that parking does move into our neighborhoods and parking is already very limited. We are, again, as we move into development, we need to be very cognizant that we're not all going to move into public transportation tomorrow because unfortunately, that's just not something, the connectivity is not there yet. And so there is still gaps in service that I personally believe we need to be very cognizant, especially for the working class. I know, again, personally, as much as I love public transportation and would love to make sure that I, I'm taking it in the next five years, I'm, I'm also very aware as a single mother in, and where my place of employment, as I move, I go out of Milpitas into San Jose, the connectivity is not there. And it does take me five times more of time to invest in my ability to take public transportation. And that is why I do believe that last mile connectivity is super important as we move through this plan. And so again, those development agreements, tax incentives, I do believe that the state of California is, as we move from a recup, move into recovery from COVID-19, I do hope that the state allows, helps local jurisdictions and that they open some opportunity for us to really help, be creative, right? I think that the development company, many development companies do want to help. They want to also move in a forward-thinking mentality. And we just need to be creative and when we have these conversations to find a middle ground. I think that's what we want to do is find a middle ground before thinking and, and ensure that, again, we're using every zone and maximizing every zone in Milpitas. Because this is a very exciting time. We get to lay the strong foundation for the future. So thank you very much, Mayor, for the time. And those are my concluding comments. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Dominguez. I, yeah, I want to wrap it up too. You know, just an incredible opportunity in the Milpitas Metro with the infrastructure that's in place, that really folks, community members, government officials, planners, city managers, regional leaders have been working on for decades. And now it's here before us. And the BART just opened. In more recent times, I know there's more growth with mass public transportation. VTA approved the light rail extension all the way through to Eastridge. And I'm, and I'm really excited to see that benefit. Folks who may be living in East San Jose, Eastridge, Almerok, you know, to take the light rail one day up to Milpitas and if we have this innovation district, it'll be fantastic in terms of jobs for folks. I kind of just want to say something really bold here with the Innovation District in particular. And talking about the FAR and the density. I, I truly believe our city right now, our elected officials, our city, I know myself certainly more connected to our community citywide than ever before. Really thanks to technology and, you know, we are no longer a city where the only thing residents can do is read the paper every Friday to get the news. You know, we, we are all connected more than ever through email and social media, news media on the internet. And I dare to say that in terms of the Innovation District and even South Milpitas Boulevard, where there is opportunity for redevelopment as well, South Milpitas Boulevard, right there north of Montague. I, I really do think there's sort of a clock tower concept that can happen there, where even in a small city that's really single-family and suburban, in terms of industrial or commercial redevelopment, the sky is almost the limit. Not the limit, but almost the limit. I think we can really, if the city council and our community and our residents, our voters really wanted it, we can really take the density very high for those employment lands strictly. And so I'm excited to see how high we can go for the Innovation District. I mean, I really am. It, it's, uh, it's, it's very exciting to see what can happen there in partnership with the community. In terms of the Innovation District and those parcels, I think those can go higher than the structures that are already surrounding the Innovation District. But that process will have to occur with the community in mind. So to our consultants that are joining us and have been working for us, sixth meeting now with the Milpitas Metro and to our city staff and to our planning department, economic development, and to our city council and our residents. It's a tremendous opportunity that we have before us, particularly with the Innovation District, which I think will be the driver for the rest of the Milpitas Metro to be redeveloped. So I'm sure we'll reconvene about this item next time and, and see where we are. And we'll see what our consultants and planning department and economic development department, see how far they'll shoot for the Scott, shoot for the stars. You know, I, I know our community would really appreciate some beautiful structures like other cities throughout time across America with the clock tower sort of concept. If there's any further comments, I'm looking for them. Let me pull up my agenda. Steve, did you want to provide any comments or city manager?
So Mayor Tran, we're, we still have a few more slides, so just wanted to give you heads up on that.
Okay, great.
City manager, by all means.
I don't know, no, no, I'll ask Steve. I don't know, no, no, I'll ask Steve until.
Mayor, no, it's, it's fine, actually. So yeah, I was communicating with Ned. So they do have some, just, they're just going to wrap up some slides with you. And I would just say this was a great, great meeting, really good information. Your, all your department heads involved in this plan are very happy with the way things are going tonight, and super appreciative. So that, that's my comments, and I think we should just have Ned going to take us home.
Yeah, he will, and then we'll do public comment, and then we'll get out of here. You can tell I'm trying to get everybody off of work here tonight, hopefully by nine o'clock at the latest. Ned, please, Ned.
Yeah, the next few slides that we had were actually some of the things that we've already talked about. We had a couple of slides on fees, for example. Lauren gave the information already, so the information that has been collected. We need to sync our numbers. Ours are a little higher than what she gave, because they include the numbers for projects that are entitled but have not yet come in for building permits. So we're aware of some additional fees that are yet coming in, so it's actually a little bit higher than what the actual fees are that have been collected. Here you see, and there the plus sign, the, the fees that have been collected since 2008. The good news is that we have remaining in our fund somewhere between 48, as you heard Lauren say, 53. That's enough to cover all of the remaining, we call them the VIP projects, the basic infrastructure plan projects. We have enough to cover those. But with the new plan, as we'll see in the next slide, there's a couple of additional infrastructure projects we've identified that anywhere from 20 to 50 million dollars. And so that's what we will be coming back, but this is kind of a preview of coming attractions. At some point, when we have a, when the plan, the actual plan is ready and, and we can identify what that new basic infrastructure plan will be, we will estimate the, the fees that will be required, and we'll, we'll come back and have another discussion with the council. This, this slide identifies some of those proposed infrastructure projects are, would be in addition to what is in the existing task plan. Now, you'll, you'll see, for example, that, you know, if the, if over time, as the Great Mall site redevelops, for example, there would be additional roads, utilities, parks that would need to be developed. Now, some of, this, this is why we brought up the concept of a development agreement, because that, we anticipate that that site would be developed through a development agreement between the city and the property owner Simon Property. And that, that's a longer-term development. So we don't have the actual numbers for what will be there, but we, we will hope to provide some estimates. We do know, however, that we, you know, some of the properties that the city has purchased over in the Tango neighborhood, there will be some additional park development there, as well as some roadway improvements. So we, we will estimate those. And then, as we've been talking tonight, in the Innovation District, there's some additional park and roadway improvements that would be needed there. So it's still a little bit up there, but we wanted to give you an idea of some of the things that we're contemplating. And certainly, the, the direction that we've received from the council, very detailed, the things you want to see, you like to see. That has been very helpful to Jane and Christina, taking on as they put together those policies to bring them back. And then this slide, we were just identifying the, sort of, what would make up the money that would be used to build those infrastructure projects. It's kind of a combination between the fees, the impact fees that developers pay. We may, there may be grants that the city pursues, federal grants, state grants, that we could pursue for that. And then we're using all of those funds, as I mentioned, for this basic infrastructure program. And, for example, we know that we have money available for what's programmed into the task. It's already programmed to our capital improvements program that's brought to you each year. And as we identify new projects, they would then need to be incorporated into, into the, so we have the BIP and the CIP and the two of those together. I don't know, I guess they make us VIPs because we're going to fund all of our infrastructure. So just, again, just wanted to give you kind of the big picture of how the money come in, and then how it's, how it's spent or paid out. And then I believe the last slide is, oh, the last slide, Jane, you may need to cover this one. We just, we, we had hoped to have a draft plan ready for you. But again, as we got into it and saw some of these changes we wanted to make, in order to get a really good plan, Jane and Christine are currently working on that draft. So I don't know if there's anything additional you want to, this is our last slide. And then, I don't know, Jane or Christine, if you want to say something about where you are in drafting the actual plan policies.
Sure, I can jump in really quick, or Jane, we just unmuted simultaneously. And we are, just as you say, Ned, you know, we, we kind of, we got to this project description, and we all got to like, okay, is this, you know, is this what we're really going to codify? And we're, and, and we weren't quite ready. We wanted to really make sure that we did this Innovation District concept justice. And so we're, we're working on that, and now that we have some, some great direction, we're going to move forward with drafting the plan.
Awesome, yes.
And I was just going to add, we have quite a few of our subconsultants working really hard on this, including W-Trans, the transportation planning firm. And we have BKF looking at infrastructure and their engineers. And of course, there is also ICF, who is starting the EIR.
I had a quick question, Mayor.
Yes, please.
Will there be incubators there and trails and, you know, make it really walkable for those businesses there in the innovation center? Did you?
I can respond to the incubator question. Yes, Vice Mayor, we're definitely looking at expanding opportunities for a business incubator, perhaps even an accelerator. We want to make sure, and we have already had conversations with San Jose State University, with their innovation department. We have a incubator down the street from this area called Falcon S-X. We've started conversations with them, and they're interested in continuing to explore potential opportunities. So, yes.
Great, great. That's, and so the, I get, I guess the landscape is, I'm, I'm hoping that it'll be walkable and, you know, people-friendly.
It'll be warm, it won't be cold, yeah.
Yeah. But I'm glad that, that we are having incubators there. Thank you.
That's a very cool question. Thank you, Vice Mayor. Okay, I can't tell you how excited I am for the Innovation District. Just don't hold back on us. Go, go to the stars with that one. I want to go to public comment. Let me do my job. I know Enderjit, you're watching at home or wherever you're at, join us, please. And just put your virtual raised hand up. Our RT department will make sure you're connected with the audio. Or if you didn't have a virtual raised hand, that's okay, too, if you change your mind. But I do see, and I did see the virtual raised hand up for a bit. I want to make sure I acknowledge you, give you a time. Okay, up, up and down, microphone, waiting, waiting. Okay, welcome.
We're unmuted. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Council and city staff, it's great to be with you here. And it's really a fantastic project. You know, a long time waiting for this to happen. And we look forward to some results pretty soon, and for all of us to enjoy a new life in Mill Peters. And after waiting for 40 years, this is really, really awesome. So thank you all for making this happen. And I just hope that we have a process that, you know, accelerates all the results that we see possible. And, you know, we just thank you very, very much.
Awesome, positive vibes. I love it. Okay, I know we have another guest or two here. Thanks for joining us on the Zoom. If you'd like to make a public comment, we are here for you. If not, going once, going twice, I don't see any further virtual raised hands. And I'll continue to say thanks. It's the season of thanks. It's the season of thanks here in Mill Peters, the month of May and June, if you ask me. And I just want to thank our guest, Jane and Christina and Kevin, I'm looking at all the boxes here, Tafian as well. We heard from you, our, our city attorney for the evening, the city attorney du jour, Martin. Thanks for being here with us. Give you a nice shout out, because you're not with us all the time, but when you are, we appreciate you. And to really the tandem of Alex and Ned. I know council member Fan appreciates those two departments intertwining very strongly and tightly. So that's it. I'm going to cut this meeting short right now. We got a busy meeting tomorrow night, a lot of agenda items. I want to ask my colleagues and city staff to get all the rest you can, drink a lot of water. And we'll be back here tomorrow night. Let's make it an efficient meeting, please. This being adjourned. Take care.